They'll prorate it. Certainly if we're acknowledging that we don't have to fill that position right away, we can get a sub in there until we can activate this and get going.
So is there somewhere we can make a list that that'll happen? That'll be brought back to the board's attention and will... Oh, you're not saying wait then?
I was saying if we do wait, I'd want to make sure we're notified for the fact that we're going to a position like that. But whoops. But if, you know, my... I mean, I guess we can prorate it, but to me it's, you know, let's put it in play and just, you know, in the media and set up to either qualify people that we now get here. And I know we're getting great ones, but at least we'll ramp up our hiring practices. Any other comment? Let's call the vote proceed.
Lum?
No.
Murray?
Yes.
England? Yes. Hackman?
Yes.
Sal?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Bixler?
No.
Hough?
No.
Erdman?
Yes.
We know six yeses.
I'd like to move by a D.
Second.
Discussion?
I guess the only thing I want to say is, you know, I am trying to be conscientious of what we're spending and to me, I'd like to just maybe start from one place and see how it goes.
Agrees.
If it's counted, it'd be senseless because of the new stuff.
Yep. Agreed.
Any other discussion? No. Roll call.
Murray?
No.
England?
No.
Hackman?
No.
Sal?
No.
Gray?
No.
Bixler?
No.
Hough?
No.
Erdman?
No.
Lum?
No.
Ken, motion accepted.
I received some great information. Thank you, Mr. Reese, for bringing this to my attention. I very much appreciate this. Last week, we did vote to...I thought I did. Last week, we did approve for an eighth grade learning support teacher, and she is in attendance tonight, so we're thrilled to have her. Jenna Neal, would you like to stand up and introduce yourself to us?
Hello, I'm Jenna Neal. I started last Thursday. So far, I'm loving it, and I really just hope to continue renewing and learning all about this school and everything.
Welcome to you. I apologize. Is there anyone else that I may have missed? Thank you, Ms. Reese. I really appreciate it. We did discuss this last week. This is an FYI for you in terms of the PSBA officers. This is one of our obligations as a member of PSBA. Certainly lots of information has been coming in email in regard to these individuals. I don't have any... Me? No? What? Oh. I'd like to move by a D. Second.
You have a discussion? Roll call.
England?
Yes.
Hackman?
No.
Sal?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Bixler?
Yes.
Hough?
Yes.
Erdman?
No.
Lum?
Yes.
Murray?
Yes.
Seven yeses, two no's.
Going back to the previous discussion about the PSBA officers, you've really seen their video. I can direct you to further information. I believe that Mary will have an actual ballot for us at some point, correct? Or no?
No, you do your vote in P R and I file your vote electronically. Okay. This is your ballot. This is the post's ballot.
Okay. So we just need to say we're okay. Are there any objections to the individuals that are listed here for us to pass out? If not, then that concludes management.
How about that?
So, Lum?
Yes, there is. But, but, so we agreed for this to vote.
How do we take the vote?
Let's take a vote on the election of the officers, and then we'll get to Dave's last motion.
Should I make a motion for that? Howard? I make a motion to authorize Mary to respond on behalf of North Lebanon with the PSBA officers listed.
Roll call.
Hackman?
Yes. Sorry. I was in the burrow for a minute.
Sal?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Bixler?
Yes.
Hough?
Yes.
Erdman?
Yes.
Lum?
Yes.
Murray?
Yes.
England?
Yes.
All in favor.
My apologies, Director Hough. I would like to move, I would ask which reads, please somebody write it down.
Okay. Movement an individual uses the locker room or bathroom use based on their sex or their birth certificate in cases that are individual. That an individual is uncomfortable with using locker rooms such as bathrooms, the school will work with the individual to find a unisex bathroom. One could move.
Howard, since you're here, would you like...
Second.
Howard, since you're here, would you like to respond or give thoughts on that motion?
Yes. Of course, normally I would provide detailed advice to the board first before sharing things publicly, but if the board wishes, I'm glad to make some general comments.
If you are comfortable with that?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Of course, this is an issue that's of national controversy and in constant flux. Since the Obama administration in May of 2016 issued what it considered to be guidelines that it would enforce against school districts, there have been various lawsuits filed, including a lawsuit out of Texas where the judge ruled that the Obama administration may not enforce its guidelines that it's issued to schools, but at least until the Supreme Court decides whether to rule on the pending case out of Virginia on this issue. So, things are happening, if not every day or every week, certainly every month and sometimes several times a month. So, the law on this issue is uncertain. Second, although we've not been asked and haven't had discussions about the practice in Northern Lebanon School District, my understanding from public comments attributed to the superintendent is that the current practice is pretty much in conformance with the motion that Director Hough has made. At least, that's my understanding of the practice that has occurred, that they try to work with students and address any concerns, and I believe in some cases have, that this resulted in students using a unisex restroom. Again, we've not looked at it, but that was my understanding of public comments that, of which I was made aware. And so, if you're already engaged in a kind of practice that's consistent with a motion that's been made, and if the state of law is in flux, it doesn't sound like passing the motion would result in any immediate change in what you're doing. All it would do would be to highlight the school district taking a particular position, which may or may not generate controversy, may or may not generate lawsuits, and since the matter appears to be on track to be resolved by the Supreme Court on a national basis in the relatively near future, by that I don't mean tomorrow or next month, but probably within a year or so, it seems likely. Your one consideration to the board is why adopt any policy one way or the other at this point? Why not just continue the practice that we've been doing, which is consistent, as I understand it, with the motion that's been made and therefore we...to avoid bringing any particular attention to the practices of the school district. That would be one consideration to the board.
Thank you. Sorry to put you on the spot.
No problem.
Do you want to go first or can I say?
Doesn't matter. I've got my piece in silver later.
I'm sure. I'll look you here first.
Couple things. I think this issue highlights the need for the safety of our children, especially our female population. Today, a person, a man, could decide that they're a woman for five minutes, walk into any locker room, any bathroom, while, you know, a student's in there, and the man I'm referring to is also a student, so I'm not suggesting some older non-students doing this, but it could happen during a basketball game too, where a man decides he's a woman and can use any of the women's facilities, and I don't think that that's fair to any female to have that privacy be invaded. That same person could leave the female facility, snap their fingers, and think they're a man again, and that's fine. And that can occur under the current laws today. I think we need a policy, and Howard, remember you're familiar with this case, I read about it in the Lebanon Daily News, where the Supreme Court of Georgia ruled that this individual was innocent, and the individual was charged with the crime of taking photos underneath women's skirts in a grocery store. His charge rested, found guilty, went to the Supreme Court. Not that Georgia has a very liberal Supreme Court. The reason why he was found innocent was because there was no wall on Georgia's books that prevented somebody from taking a camera and taking a picture underneath some woman's woman's skirt. So I feel we need a policy in place that we are on record of what we accept that's right and wrong in this situation, so we're not caught in the same position that the state of Georgia was, where somebody does this, a man says, hey, I'm a woman, walks into the locker room while the girls are changing for gym class, and we can't do anything because we don't have a formal policy on there. Unless the board thinks it's okay for a man to think he's a woman for five minutes and go in and watch our daughters and our female students change, then we don't need a policy. But I adamantly feel that that's incorrect, that we need to protect the privacy of all our children.
Just a simple comment. You referenced policy. I don't think that's the same as a motion. It seems to me that this would be something that would be a policy that would be written by one of our power committees, and then with the blessing of Howard, and then for us to go on, policy. I'm not sure that the motion necessarily accomplishes what you're discussing.
Well, then, let's vote on making it a policy and having, I think your committee's a policy committee, to ASAP implement this policy so we can start protecting, because I feel very uncomfortable with what's going on in our country, and that I don't think our female population is currently protected under what we have.
I don't speak for me either. Don't the public can still hear?
So, I have a bunch of things I could say, and I certainly do have opinions on the matter, but our district has plenty of highlighting going on right now, and I just really want to try to focus on the positive things going on in our district. And it's just like, one thing after another that's bringing negativity, and I just want people to do, like, what is the best for our district. Howard said that there is a lot going on right now, and there will be some probably decisions in the near future. So I don't understand why we're bringing this highlight to our district at this particular moment. And Howard said we do not need to adopt a policy at this point, that it sounds like there's already a practice going on. And Dave, maybe you're aware of concerns that weren't ever expressed to me? I don't, or if you're just seeing whatever happened in Georgia?
Haven't you received the same letters that I've received as a board director that we've gotten over the summer, asking people to address this issue?
I'm not saying that I didn't.
Okay. I mean, you're kind of implying that it's only my issue and nobody else in the school district cares about this issue?
I just want, like, people to look positively upon our district.
I think it is positive when we care about our female student population and put in a policy to prevent males going into their locker rooms and the bathroom. I think that should be a protected space for our female students, and I view that to be a very positive thing, not a negative thing. And my proposal is not to discriminate against transgender issues, is to provide them a safe harbor where they also could feel comfortable. And I'm not sure what, I'm not transgender, so I don't know what would make a transgender person feel comfortable or not comfortable, but I'm trying to find a fair solution and prevent somebody who isn't transgender but to act transgender and to violate the privacy of our female students in locker rooms and bathrooms. And I think, again, that's a very positive thing that we should look at for our students.
And I understand, and I'm not, like, here disagreeing with you on how you're feeling about it. I just don't think we need to draw attention at every moment to something that could come out negatively for North Lebanon. That's all I'm saying. So I'm not sure why at this point, we couldn't, if we're already doing this practice, I, like, my thought would be to take the motion off the table, and if we need to, we can discuss it at a later time.
Would Dave have to take it off the table? At this point, is there any other discussion?
I think my biggest concern is, should it be policy? Or what exactly are, we're voting to do, like, what Howard said, we're voting to do something that we're already doing.
Show me the policy that says men cannot go into...
So we need policy, is what you're saying.
I'm asking, I have a policy for you.
Or that, would it make more sense to...
Well, if the question is, is the school district currently powerless to stop a man from going into the women's locker room? The answer is no, the school district can stop a man from going into the women's locker room.
Even if they feel they're transgendered?
In the example you illustrated of someone who in five minutes says, oh gee, I think now I'm going to be ungendered, and then five minutes later, another gender, I don't think the school district is obligated under anyone's construction of the law to, except...
So we're going to send in something bipolar transgender individuals?
I guess my, my comment is, my understanding, again, haven't been asked to look at it, but my understanding is the district has a practice that is addressing these types of situations to the extent they arise to the satisfaction of the individuals involved. That's my understanding. And that at some point in the relatively near future, there'll be guidance from the United States Supreme Court on what everyone must do, and so that the district can adopt the policy if it wishes, on one side of the issue or the other. And there's some districts that have done it, and there's some districts that have adopted policies such as the one you've suggested, and there are some districts that have adopted policies similar to the, or in line with what the Obama administration has promoted, and the vast majority of the districts have done that and have dealt with these issues on a case-by-case basis, when and to the extent they arise, and again, in our experience, to the satisfaction of everyone involved, and in those situations hasn't involved men walking into the girls' locker rooms.
Howard, you referenced a public comment made by our superintendent. Because of that public comment, he was told, I believe, from our board, some members of our board, that he could no longer talk publicly to the media in regards to that topic, or maybe other topics, I don't remember. And so, he has turned down the discussion with the media because he was told he can't talk, because a board member or members said he can't speak on behalf of the school. So I strongly support this, because we need to let the public know that we stand for the children. And if that statement that he made, when he was shut down because of it, then that means we really need to stand up and publicly support that. In my opinion, I tremendously support this. If any, I don't have any daughters, but if I did have a daughter, I would really, really, really be standing up screaming that this is the only time. Just because our superintendent was shut down because he expressed his thinking that many of you seem to agree with tonight.
Any other?
I kind of, after Howard explained and gave his advice early on, I could relate with that. I kind of look at this as something similar to, like, the Viking Academy a month or two ago. We were being asked to do something that's already being done, you know, for teachers to give extra time, and teachers do do that. As Howard said, this issue has already been addressed, so why, you know, go this route and make it a, you know, a policy or a vote tonight? If Howard is confident in the way the district currently handles this and feels it's acceptable, I trust him completely, and, you know, it's nice to know that the Supreme Court ultimately in the near future will basically make everyone's mind up for them, but I just, this is being addressed as far as, you know, Howard has explained, and it's, the way it's being addressed is indeed acceptable, so I think there's other things we could place our energies in. I trust Howard and his schooling in the school hall, and Dick brings up a good point, but, you know, Howard has more than eight credits of law classes, so I think he probably does know more than any person who are, so I'm going to go with his...
If I could just clarify something. I haven't evaluated what the district's doing, so I can't say I'm confident that what the district is doing is permissible. What I said was, based on the comments that I heard, here's my understanding of what the district's doing, and it hasn't resulted in any issues or controversies. So, assuming I would reach a safe conclusion upon further information, you know, I agree with that, but at this point, we haven't been asked to and haven't looked at what the district's practices are.
So, let me ask this. If we vote yes on this, we'll be basically saying yes to what we're already doing?
That's essentially my understanding. But again, I haven't talked to anyone in the district about what the practice is, based on public comments that I've heard.
Any other comments?
Yeah.
I'm looking at time.
Well, Buddy, you keep on saying daughters, what about the sons too? You know, they...
It goes both ways. It does. Nowhere in a motion does it just say females or males, it's, it's, for both. But I think, I think more fathers fear about their safeties for their daughters in schools than fathers do for their sons, and I want to vote, and I do have a thought for a little bit more. The one that can finish two twenty-five.
Is that it, Buddy?
Yep.
Sure?
I'm sure.
Give me a whole mic?
No.
Anyone else on this end?
All right. I just want to verify real quick. So, if we did not want to adopt this policy, then the only way to do that would be a no vote unless David withdraws the motion?
Motion's been made and seconded. It might help to repeat what the motion is, but it's, unless the motion would be withdrawn, there would be a vote on the motion that's been seconded.
And who does the withdrawal? If there was one, I think there's one thing, but who?
That would be the individual who made the motion.
That's what, I think that was the question. So, what is the objection? I tell you what, before you do that, let me say my piece, because I've been sitting here. First of all, there's something out there, and I certainly don't want the news to misinterpret what had happened. The only thing that some members of the board were concerned about with our superintendent is, the policy says if it's something that we have discussed, if it's something we have not discussed, then we can't, you know, nobody knows what our views are, so we were just asking that we discuss. We certainly encouraged Dr. Bell to talk to the media about current things that are on the board agenda, current affairs, et cetera, that we have discussed in the meeting. As far as this, there's a couple of things that just concern, one is that, as far as I know, nobody knew about this coming up, and at least to have the management committee who is in charge of policies review this, come up with a recommendation, especially if we're already doing this particular thing as a policy, then to have the management committee review and make, you know, a little more precise, just to kind of do a, an emotion on, a motion on a motion, because of how strongly everybody feels sometimes is not the best policy. So, I'm more the one that, let's take a look at everything. I'm offered waiting for the Supreme Court to actually make the motion. At this point, the policy is in place that, as far as I know, that Dr. Bell had told on the news and other outlets, that, you know, we are doing exactly what this motion says. So if you vote no, and I'm saying this more for the Lebanon Daily News, that is not necessarily a no vote to say that we encourage, you know, boys walking into girls' bathrooms or girls walking into boys' bathrooms and saying that they're transgender just to get in there. What we are saying is that we want to take a prudent approach that is based on law, that is based on what the Supreme Court says, and not what we're already doing, that policy. So to say no to this policy is not to say no to the actual issue. Howard had mentioned that at this point, a boy cannot just walk into a girl's bathroom, a girl cannot just walk into a boy's bathroom, and at this point, if they did, they would get in trouble, just like you would expect them to be. But the second thing that brings everybody's attention is that the only way that this policy that we have in place now is if a boy or a girl goes in, asks and says that they are transgender, I would expect that the high school or the school district would review that, look at the, you know, the ins and outs, you know, to verify it. It's not just, oh yeah, I said it today, and then tomorrow you take it back. And at this point, they would just go to another bathroom, so it's not even an issue. But down the road, if somebody, think about this, if somebody in a high school age, that age where you're really struggling with all kinds of things, but the most is peer pressure and peer acceptance, for you to go into a high school office and say, I'm transgender and I want to use a different bathroom, I promise you, I could not imagine any high school student that would willingly say that because of the peer, just, I mean, their high school years would be pure H, because it would just be absolutely the criticism from the other students. It is not something that is going to be said lightly, is not something that, I mean, and again, if it were, like Dave was saying, that you could just say for five minutes, oh, I'm transgender, and walk in, I would be all for, oh my gosh, we got to take care of this." But that groundwork is already in place to protect our students. Our students are not at risk, our students, both boys and girls. We have a mechanism in place, if there is somebody that feels that they have an issue, to kind of, I think it's a very humane way of looking at it, to handling it privately, where they're not going into another bathroom, but that's my own personal opinion, they're going into transgender room or whatever kind of bathroom they're gonna go into, but it's not gonna be the boys or the girls. So that would really protect them also from the ridicule and the bullying that would go on with this also. So I think there's many sides to this, but until the Supreme Court says something, I am a little, I look just a little apprehensive about jumping on and just saying, "This is where we stand." Because the management committee has not looked at this, the protocols have not been really gone through that we can vet out to make sure that this is in fact the best policy. So that's my two cents, and if there's no other...
Can I just offer a point of information for the board? We had sent an invitation to your administration and to all the administrations with which we work, that we're having our annual complimentary education law breakfast on October 11th. This year, we are discussing transgender student issues, and the board and the central office administrators are all invited, so that is something that you'd be invited to attend. I want to make sure you're aware of that. The morning of October 11th.
And I just think this is going on record, saying where I stand. We can work out the details later on, but I think just publicly going on record that I strongly support this. And I... And I know what you said, but I'm still saying... And I think everybody knows that I stand for the students and for, I don't think I agree with that, that do protect them. I certainly don't want them to be, you know, the scenario that Dave painted was scary, but it was reassuring to hear Howard give us the background that that does not, it cannot happen at this point because of other rules and regulations that take up in our schools.
And I don't want to belabor it, but I also just want to say that I support the administration and what they're doing. I'm sure they're right there in the issue, and I think that if something comes that is problematic, they'll handle it appropriately and then let us know, we really need to expedite this. I think waiting for guidance from the Supreme Court doesn't say that we don't agree with that. It just means that we have faith with what's happening right now, and we'll wait for further guidance, and we'll continue to...
I'd like to ask Josh and Brown, I think they're both back there, what would happen if a female or a male thought they were transgender?
I don't think that's fair to put them on the spot.
Well, maybe you did that to Chad, and it was fair that day, so why isn't it fair You say we have it covered, Howard says they won't, that they'll get in trouble for doing that. These are the people in charge of enforcing whatever policy that we think we have, but I've never read, so I'd like to hear it from the horse's mouth.
I'll let them decide whether they want to comment or not, but the idea here is, Dave, that if we went through the channels of having the management committee, we could vet out all of these issues instead of making a rash decision at this point.
Will I get it for the Viking Academy?
It is.
Let's just take it to vote.
One second. Before we take it to vote, it is a new thing, and I believe public input is allowed, and we have somebody here that has public input.
Because it was not on the agenda, I appreciate you speaking. Only at last minute. It's not on the paper. I would like to speak in regards to...
Hold on a second. So what you're saying is that he was put on the agenda to see?
Yeah, before the public input part of the agenda, so that means...
But it's not on the written agenda that we have here.
It was placed on the agenda at the meeting prior to public comment. I think it would be within the discretion of the president whether to entertain public comment under those circumstances.
And public comment should come in at the end of the meeting when we have a public comment.
If you're not voting yet.
But we're going to vote on this. And so my feeling is, and I'm a... But the reason I'm going to allow this is I have no, in fact, when I look back there, she's probably going to agree with you, I have no idea, but I'm going to allow it because this is a highly charged policy, and I think at least if there's somebody out there that wants to say, I'll give them their piece.
Once again, I have a child in the school, and at saying that there are girls, there are boys. I have one boy, one child, one boy. He could be in that bathroom, a girl come in, say she's transgender at the time, all of a sudden accusing my son of foul behavior in that bathroom. Now, we all know that you do not have videos in bathrooms. How do, how does my son, Claire, everybody knows my son would never give up, but how do you know that he is innocent if this person all of a sudden says he fondled or he did this or that? I believe that if you're gonna open this up, you need to open it up to people because it is a policy that needs to be in standard. It needs to, it's fine if that's their way of life. I have no discrimination, there is no discrimination making a bathroom for somebody. But if they want to go into that restroom in whatever manner they want, then they can, and they don't even have to address somebody, just make one in the school. Make one in the school that is able, that they don't have to bother our good, you know, principals to have to make that decision or for them to embarrass them to go there. But at the same time, my son does not, shouldn't have to stand at a urinal wondering if, or later on, after he leaves, two days later, somebody comes forward and says, "Oh, by the way, he touched me," or "He looked at me," or something. Absolutely not. It's not right. If you want to look at all the circumstances, look at them all.
I would like to say something here. I feel like this is an important topic.
Very much.
I also, the people that sent us letters this summer are people that I respect and that people that I really highly admire. I wish, Dave, that this had been put on last week, so then we would have had time to talk about it and time to digest it. I feel like when you make a quick decision, even though I feel like I'm going to make the right decision, sometimes that's not the best, and it becomes emotional. So it would have been nice to have this last week. It also may have been best to put it through management, to make it into a policy and make it official. But I am going to vote yes for this because I do feel like it's important, and I do think, for me personally, I think that we need to take a stand as a school district. So I understand and I respect everybody's opinion, but I do think that now that it's on the table, that I have to vote yes. Even if it's something that we're already doing, it's not gonna hurt to vote yes and make it just, yes, we're already doing it, yes, it's, we're just saying that we're doing it. That's just where I stand. Again, I respect everybody's opinions, but I don't want to get caught up in, I don't like the way Dave did it, because I don't like the way he did it, okay? But I don't want to get caught up in that and not vote my conscience.
And I understand that, and I just follow some of the examples that I've seen you guys do by adding stuff to the agenda, and I just thought this was a good way to do it, and I think it was appropriate I to do that since a lot of family who's a poor issue. I also agree that it may be just pushed too quickly, and maybe we should take a breath, and I would not be offended and support if we table this, and then for those who think it needs to go through the management committee to polish and make it shiner, I would welcome that. But, you know, hopefully this doesn't, and I won't let it, you know, die in the closet. I'm gonna keep this as a forefront because I do agree, it is for our sons and it is for our daughters, and that we should get a policy that protects both our sons and daughters.
Well, I haven't spoken yet, and I want to get a word in. So I appreciate you saying that, Dave, because I feel really conflicted, because I agree with everything that you're saying. I agree with the practice that's currently in place, and I believe that it emphasizes it by putting it into policy, but I want to make sure we have the right one. So I appreciate you saying that, you would appreciate a polished, and giving us the opportunity to look at it a little bit more in depth. It is an emotional topic, and we don't want to respond out of emotion. So I'm sitting here thinking, how do I respond? Because right now, I feel like it's motion for me, and I want to make the right decision. So I would appreciate if it would be tabled and we could look at it from a legal standpoint and what's best interest of our students, and be given a little more time to look at both of those avenues. Unfortunately, we're in a society where we need to look at both. So I don't know how I'm gonna vote if we don't take it off the table. That's where I'm at.
I wanted to say something. The principal's didn't answer, and that's fine, maybe they're going to. I know at Hershey, this was brought up early in the year, and our principal, as far as a kid just walking in, you know, I thought of myself in high school, like being a squirrel, and, "Oh, this is an excuse to do this or that." That cannot, it can't be done, as Howard stated. If a kid says they're transgender, they can't decide they're transgender at one minute and then not the next, depending on who's in the bathroom. At Hershey, a kid that's transgender will meet with his parents and the principal, and they will work, they will work something out, and they will be accommodated for... But as far as the threat of just kids, like Chris Gensler said, kind of going in and out, deciding they want to be, Dave said the same thing, there's, they need to meet with the principal, and Glenn said earlier that that would be hard for a kid to do, but that is what, they would have to identify and explain that, yes, I indeed am this, and then once that happens, that's when the principals, you know, will explain how it's dealt with. I do have one thought here, and it is, to say this isn't discrimination, I think you have to be very careful, because in the 1960s, people thought that a bathroom for black people was totally okay, and not everyone, but some. Some people thought a black bathroom, black seats on a bus were okay, and now, 60 years later, probably most of us in this room think that's absurd, okay? So, and who's to say, 20, 30 years from now, we could be looked at, "Man, that Houck and that Earwood guy, Houck, for them to think it was okay to have separate bathrooms?" Because I'm not saying I disagree with Dave, I'm just saying, we don't know what the future holds. This could be, I mean, I thought it was ridiculous for Kaepernick to not stand up for the National Anthem, and now, a week later, it's turning into the general theme, we're not standing up. So who's to say 20, 30 years from now? I'll probably be dead by then, but it might be the norm, that yes, there are transgender bathrooms, people go where they want to go. So I think we have to watch, when Christie said it's, she's not discriminating, I understand she doesn't have a problem with people that are transgender, but in 30 years, it could be looked back on, like, who the heck did they think they were? Just like we look back at the 60s now, who did these people think they were, saying there were black water fountains, black restaurants, black ports on buses? So you have to be careful when we say we're not discriminating, and once again, I'll go with Howard, I think we're, I think we do have this covered, and I'd like to wait for the Supreme Court to tell us more.
Dave, I guess the other question is, will you move your motion, or do you want it to go forward?
I would like to table it.
Table it? Discussion? I thought we kind of discussed it. Sorry.
You could invite limited discussion, table it if there is any.
If there's any discussion?
You can vote down the other one first before we do that.
No, no.
Thank you, Dave. That's my comment. I, standing as six o'clock management meetings, we will definitely add that to the agenda. And Mrs. Gerhart, are you able to see his yet? Okay, that would be great, and then we'll have that to our policy discussion and...
Thank you. Now, will you roll call?
On the table, on the table.
On the table, yes. This is the vote to table.
Sam?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Finsler?
Yes.
Houck?
Yes.
Erdman?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Murray?
Yes.
England?
Yes.
Hackman?
Yes.
All in favor?
I really do think that's the end.
Okay, well, thank you very much, Director Self, Director England.
Okay, I move item A.
Second.
Discussion?
It looks good. I just have a couple of questions, just out of my own curiosity, if it's okay. How many students are usually in that class? You know?
I want to say the max can be 18, and they're, it's gonna be...
And it looks really great. And then my other question is, do they do anything with their creations? Like, do they donate them? I think they probably did.
Yes, they do. For all the seasonal stuff, they sell different things, pretty much at cost. They put displays around, especially the offices, and travel to the... Send you an action.
Roll call?
Finsler?
Yes.
Houck?
Yes.
Erdman?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Murray?
Yes.
Erdman?
Yes.
Hackman?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
All in favor? I move item B.
Discussion? Roll call?
Houck?
Yes.
Erdman?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Murray?
Yes.
England?
Yes.
Hackman?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Finsler?
Yes.
All in favor? I move item C.
Discussion? Roll call?
Erdman?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Murray?
Yes.
England?
Yes.
Erdman? Sam?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Finsler?
Houck?
Yes.
Move item D.
Discussion? Roll call?
Lund?
Yes.
Murray?
Yes.
England?
Yes.
Hackman?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Finsler?
Yes.
Houck?
Yes.
Erdman?
Yes.
All in favor? I move item E.
Second.
Roll call, discussion?
I just wanted to say that I read just another high school play, and I look forward to seeing the creativity that the students and the staff bring to this play.
Roll call?
Murray?
Yes.
England?
Yes.
Hackman?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Finsler?
Yes.
Houck?
Yes.
Erdman?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
All in favor? I move item F.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
England?
Yes.
Hackman?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Finsler?
Yes.
Houck?
Yes.
Erdman?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Murray?
Yes.
All in favor? And you move item G.
Discussion? Roll call?
Hackman?
Yes.
Sal?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Bixler?
Yes.
Halk?
Yes.
Erdman?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Murray?
Yes.
England?
Yes.
All in favor.
I just have a couple more things, really quickly. I just wanted to ask the principals, do we have still in place the texting for parents for like emergencies, early dismissals? We did that last year, I just wanted, yeah, I thought of it.
Yes, and a clarification would be, unlike last year where there was an enrollment date, it continually evolves, so as soon as information's updated, if power school within 72 hours, new texting numbers should get a text message to say, "Yes, I want them," or "No, I don't."
Okay. And one, along that same line, I know some parents either don't look at their calendar, or don't look at their calendar soon enough, and some events they're not aware of until like the day of, or they get a paper home from their middle school parent, or whatever. Is it possible to do like major events, like the middle school parent night, the high school parent night, that kind of thing, just a shout out, you know, just a reminder, this coming Thursday, or, you know, that kind of thing? Or would we have to change our policy? I can't remember how we decided to do that.
The technology is capable of doing that, previous board action prohibited it back. It wasn't part of the approved list of items that we would use text messaging for.
Okay. We would have to discuss that then. Okay, so that's something maybe programs can discuss. And then the other thing, you had brought up typing, if you look at your place, did you see it?
Yeah, I did have it before.
Okay, so thank you so much for that update about typing, that was great, I'm excited about that. And the other, it kind of goes under program, sort of, in the Christmas party, we do not have it scheduled at a place yet, and so I guess I need to know from all of you if that is something I'd like to do, and if not, I'll just skip it, but I guess if the majority want to do it, then we need to get a place reserved. I guess senior, it's not like something that we have to do, just to...
Thank you, Director England.
Thank you, Director England, Director Bixler.
I move item A.
Second.
Discussion? Vocal?
Sal?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Bixler?
Yes.
Halk?
Yes.
Erdman?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Murray?
Yes.
England?
Yes.
Hackman?
Yes.
All in favor.
I move item B.
Second.
Discussion?
What is a shared table?
What's it, yeah.
Paperwork on...
I think I understand, but Leanne jumped in here if I don't understand. I think, if you see it?
I didn't see, I just was going back through.
Go ahead, Leanne, tell us what we've got.
Currently, as students visit the lunch line, they are required to be qualified lunch at the National School Lunch Program, to have any fruit on their plate. Many students do not want this fruit, or do not like the fruit selection of the day, so the fruit is ending up in the garbage can. This was noticed by a teacher who presented a request. And what we would like to do, and this has been approved by the USPA and the Pennsylvania Department of Ag, is to set up a table cafeteria near a cafeteria store that they can set that fruit on. First, it will be offered to students in the cafeteria, if they are hungry after their lunch and they would like to eat more, they may take an item from this table at no charge. At the end of the day, what is left will be boxed up by that teacher and taken to a local nonprofit organization to help fight hunger in our local communities.
Thank you.
I don't know how I missed that, is it wasn't on the...
It was just...
I'm sorry, I just, I missed what you said, you say it's intensive, and yet only, or you're saying...
No, it was before finally approved, we tried to do it last year, it was not approved by the state until June of 2016.
Okay, thank you.
Vocal?
Bixler?
Yes.
Halk?
Yes.
Erdman?
Yes.
Lund?
Yes.
Murray?
Yes.
England?
Yes.
Hackman?
Yes.
Sal?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
All in favor.
That's the end of my report.